Beer Board Meeting Called to Order. Roll Call Please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride, Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farah.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of the meeting of the minutes of previous meeting dated March 28, 2022?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Under new business, we have a request from the Pearl Foundation, Historic Downtown Clinton, Taylor Martin at 302 Delta Street, Clinton, Tennessee, for a Class E on-premise special event beer permit located at Market Street slash Cullum slash Commerce Street here in Clinton. Taylor, would you like to approach the podium and kind of give us an overview of what this is going to entail?
Sure. So, uh, we got a beer permit in the spring for the Spring Antique Fair, but I don't know if you guys remember, but it was a washout that Friday night. We had a crazy storm, so we ended up not using it. So, we are hosting an event on July 29th at the Old Hammers Building and on Cullum Street. It's called a Sip of Summer Fest. It's a brew tasting event. It's going to be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And tickets are $50, and that includes your beer tasting, that includes food trucks, and live entertainment. So, we have about six breweries that have already said yes, and we're trying to get four more, so.
All the breweries going to be inside?
Yes, all the breweries are going to be inside of the Old Hammers Building.
And the food's going to be outside?
Food's going to be outside on Cullum Street, and so will the live entertainment.
Entertainment, yeah. So, you want to talk about the process as far as, as far as the, how the process is going to be when people come in and drink and?
Yeah, sure. So, there will be a one-way entrance into, they have to go into Cullum Street, and there'll be a person there checking IDs, and then we will also have security there. And we do have a designated ticket for a designated driver that includes coffee flights instead of beer. So, and it is a family-friendly event as well, so.
Is there any limit on what they can have, or?
Uh, so it is, it's sample size, so.
So, they're pretty small?
Yeah, but it is for four hours. It's unlimited, so.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the council? Any questions, Roger? Hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn beer board meeting?
So move.
Means adjourn, regular meeting called to order. Roll Call Please. I'm sorry, we have a public hearing called to order. Roll Call Please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride, Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Who read?
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farah.
Here.
And Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearing is on ordinance number 672 for the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Would anyone like to speak on the budget? Any questions or concerns? Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So move.
Public hearing adjourned. Called to order a regular, regular meeting. Roll Call Please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride, Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Who read?
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farah.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. This, prayer this evening, if you didn't know, I want Mr. Gann to give the prayer. Also during this time, let's think about Craig Dixon, the person that, he was assistant basketball coach for a long time for Clinton High School, and also a former employee of the City of Clinton, and not only, not only Craig, but his family, but the others that we've lost during this last month.
Take a moment. Our Father, we thank thee for those who have served our community, our schools, our fellow citizens in such a way that we remember them and the services they provided for all of us, that they were special people to us, and that they did things to make the City of Clinton better. We pray that you'd help us to remember those who are still doing these things, Father, and to say thank you for what they're doing to make our city a better place to live. Be with us now as we try to take care of the city's business. We pray that you'd lead and direct us. We pray that you'd guide us as a, as a city, as a county, as a country that we may credit and praise things. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. You know, he was there the whole time that my daughter played, and she was such a better player, and just had, I mean, always could lean on Craig along with other coaches, and he was just a real good guy, and.
I worked with him for 10 years, and not a better guy out there.
Yeah, I agree. So, he'll certainly be missed. Do I have a, do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated May 23, 2022?
So move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. This time we'll hear from any visitors or citizens in regards to grievances or praises for the city at this time. Communications from the mayor, I have a couple of appointments I need to appoint. First of all, on CUB, Steve Combs' term ended July 1, 2022. I'd like to reappoint Steve to CUB, term ending July 1, 2026. Hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. 911, I have two appointments. Carl Bailey, I'd like to, again, reappoint him. He came into abbreviated term, term ending July 1, 2026, and also David Queener, to reappoint him, term ending July 1, 2026. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Did I mess up somewhere?
I'm going to wish the chamber would do their.
Oh. Well, I did communications to the mayor. They can jump in there. Somebody didn't jump up. Also, with much debate, I'd like to reappoint Jason Brown to one-year term to the Anderson County Tourism Council Advisory Board, term ending June 30, 2023. Hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Also, as we're going through these boards and commissions, I've spoken with, Stephen McNally and myself have spoken over the last couple of weeks, and one thing he said when he ran for mayor four years ago, that he had a lot of people come up and say, "I'd like to get involved. There's, I don't know the avenue to do that," so on and so forth. And what we had talked about, about kind of trying to get more people involved, is putting a link on the regular Clinton City page, and having a link, you know, getting involved, and maybe have a description of every board and what they do, and also on Facebook to have a link to click on that and be able to go back to our regular city website, to be able to, again, if they're interested in a certain board, type their name, might be a small questionnaire, but that way we can start building the bench as far as people that want to get involved but really don't know a lot of us here on the board, to be able to say, "Hey, I like to do this or that." So, I thought it was a good idea, and something that I've talked to Roger to enact that hopefully in the next couple of months, and I'll update you all when that, when that happens. So, Rick, would you like to speak now?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Rick Meredith, 422, Mariner Point Drive, President of Anderson County Chamber of Commerce. I have sent you guys the final version for the South Clinton vision. As many of you know, that we were very successful with the Clinton Downtown Vision. A lot of things have come out of that, a lot of things we're still working on, now passed on to the Historic Downtown Group with assistance from the chamber. But this one was quite different. Obviously, the new bridge is built, and now we've got progress moving into South Clinton. There's 70-something pages, or give or take, and I don't want to go through 70 of those to, in remembrance of your time, because I know you've got other issues. So, I'm just going to go through what we can with this. For the citizens at home, this will be on the Anderson County Chamber website. We will also download it. We will also send it to the 123-some citizens in South Clinton that came to the meetings. They'll have a copy of this presentation as well. We started this back in March with three to four meetings, two with citizens, ones with stakeholders, and everything went good. I was really surprised at the second meeting that we had over 80 people come. So, as far as what came out of this, without going through all of those slides, there was a top 12. I won't list all of these. Some of the ones that were probably concerning are, you know, the passions for change, the passions, you've got a new bridge, and then we enter into Clinton, and we want to make it look good, improve that connectivity. Obviously, we all know about Aspire Park coming in the next year or so, and that's going to increase traffic crossings and everything else. So, there's connectivity with pedestrians as well as bike trails. Another interesting thing came out is lighting. Lighting down the highway is kind of dim. A lot of residents say that that needs to be brighter, or maybe LED lights. Trees, landscaping and beauty, of course. Traffic control, you know, slow it down. Once we have approximately 90,000 to 100,000 visitors to Aspire Park, it's going to create some traffic, even more traffic in South Clinton. And signage, you know, "Welcome to Clinton," similar to down at Mariner Point. You know, we've got a nice real sign that says, "Welcome to Clinton." I think the residents over there like to feel a part of Clinton. Back in the days, all days, it's always been North-South in Clinton, but we're really all Clinton. And I think that was brought out into a lot of, a lot of the meetings, they just want the same identity because we're all after the same thing. The school crossing for South Clinton Elementary, I know Director Johnson's here. She can comment if she's like, but that is an issue crossing the highway. Some residents actually witnessed children crossing the highway dribbling a basketball, trying to get across to the park, the other, the South Inclusion Park. So, you know, those are issues that hopefully the city can work with TDOT and others to, to correct that. And you know, the last preference I'll say is, this is simple to the, or similar to the last one. This is a vision. This is not the chamber of the residents saying the city need, you know, making the city do things. This is simply what MHM and the architects we hired looked at this from a third party. You know, they're not from Clinton, and with their expertise, this is what they came up with, with all the citizens' input. This plan will stay within the chamber and our Business Development Committee. Amber Price and Joey Smith, who's here, who is actually my chairman, they co-chair that committee, will keep this plan and work with Roger and staff or council on any of the issues that you see here. So, with that, I'm going to, again, preference that it will be on the chamber website in the morning. We will email it to everyone that attend, anybody else that wants it. If you guys need, have constituents that want it, please let us know. This is a public document. So, I'll be hap-
Can you put that on our website, too, or can you send that to?
I can, Roger has it, so I guess you can, yeah. Any questions, comments?
I think it's important to note, I mean, this, a lot of this is kind of like when we did Downtown. It's conceptual.
True.
But I think there's some really good ideas that's, that's not very costly to do, like the pedestrian walk, the crosswalk. It would be something that, that could easily be done. I think lights and, Roger and I have talked about that a year or two ago, about the LED lighting downtown, or I mean, on, on that side of the town.
Right.
From the bridge to the city limits.
Right.
So, I, I think some of these things that are, that a lot of people want us to do, and again, from a cost standpoint, is, is pretty cost-effective, then I think we can take some action on some of this stuff. I think some of this stuff, too, I mean, again, it's conceptual.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah. But thank you for your, all your time and work on that.
I have a couple more things just for, I'd like to thank staff, Roger Howt, Chief Becker, Chief Little, JB, for all the work they did for the birthday party for the chamber with our 5K. We couldn't do it without them, so I just want a council to know that. Also, on a personal note, I'm not running for reelection. I've served county commission 12 years, and representing Clinton for 12 years has been great, and I've worked with you, all of you all, on a whole lot of host of things, and I just want to say thank you for allowing me to do that, so.
Real, real quick, before you, before you leave the podium about the, the vision, I think one of the things that we can do, that I'd like to see done, and I know it's a difficult task, but codes enforcement coming into town is, is critical, you know? I think the beautification of South Clinton is, is what I draw out of the vision, and it's a challenge. I mean, it is a challenge, and it's one that I would ask staff to continue to embrace and, and, and do the best you can. Stay vigilant, you know, and, and it's confusing because what somebody may not find, you know, appealing doesn't mean it's out of codes. But if it is out of codes, then we need to make every effort to ensure that, that people are being treated fairly, but people are treated sternly as well. And while we have a lot of discretion, we need to, in my opinion, really work hard to, to keep South Clinton or Clinton beautiful.
Yes, several of those comments were made in all the meetings. The residents would like to see it across the board.
Anything else? Thanks, Rick.
Thanks.
And thanks for your service on county commission also. Before we move on, this become, this has become a common occurrence. I have a proclamation for Ms. Cook. So, where do you want to do this?
Somebody's been holding out on her.
This is the first proclamation that you haven't written.
I can't do it.
Let's go, let's go down the podium and counsel, if y'all like to join me, and come down, and that way if we have any words you'd like to share, you can do that.
I think Zach's getting there.
as Finance Director of the City of Clinton, having served as director for the last 11 years, and whereas Mrs. Cook's public service career spanned over 23 years, beginning at Anderson County Government as Director of Accounts and Budgets, and then went on to serve as Finance Consultant for the Municipal Technical Advisory Service, where she was instrumental in the formation and development of the Certified Municipal Finance Officer Program enacted by the State Legislature, Legislature in 2007, where her expert knowledge and financial acumen remain in the program today, and whereas Mrs. Cook continued her public service career by joining the City of Clinton in 2011 as Finance Director, and whereas Mrs. Cook's positive and effective influence within our community and among her peers has won her the highest regard of her associates, as well as being recognized by Government Finance Officers Association, and was awarded with a Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the last five consecutive years, which is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and finance reporting. And whereas the leadership of our city will miss the officially active participation of Mrs. Cook in the day-to-day affairs of the city, and whereas the mayor and city council of the, of the City of Clinton wished to thank Gail Cook for her years of service to the City of Clinton and for her dedication and loyal service to the citizens of our community, and wish her a happy retirement, and out therefore be it resolved that a copy of this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the Clinton City Council and the original thereof presented to Gail Cook. This proclamation adopted the 27th day of June 2022. I was doing so well, almost got choked up.
Thank you.
No. I'm, I'm going to say that, I'm going to yield to, to the rest of the council, but, I mean, we, we hit a home run when we got Roger in, and we already had such great department heads, and we still do today. But I tell you, the icing on the cake was getting Gail, and, and she really took the old saying, "Take us from good to great." Deep breath. But all the things that, that we've done, we couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I don't know if I can now. No, I cleaned out my office Sunday, and I wouldn't even let my husband come so I could cry. Thank you, guys. It has been fabulous. It was my dream job. I just didn't know it. To the department heads, like, "Oh, been great." To my staff, everything we do is not Gail. It's a team effort with my staff, and they're beyond believable. And especially to Roger, who wouldn't take no for an answer. Wouldn't ask me to be Finance Director, and I told him no. So, you're right, you picked a fabulous guy right here. He's a great boss, and he loves the City of Clinton, so thank you all.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to introduce our new Finance Director, Chris Phillips. Came from Anderson County Courthouse. You've been gone for how many years now, six or seven? Chris, just come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you've been doing.
Wow. Gail's a hard act to follow. This is the second time I've attempted to, to do it. I worked for Gail. She hired me in 99, and I think she had only been there about six months at the courthouse, and I was, I was with her for several years until she left, and then I became Finance Director for the county. In 2015, I left Anderson County to go to pursue some dreams. Moved to South Florida. Been down there for the last six and a half years as a budget administrator and a Finance Director. And so, life changes happen, and we, my wife and I decided we were moving back, and when, when we decided that, the first call I made was to Gail Cook, and I said, "You're so plugged in with, with our line of work, you know, tell me of anything you may know of." She goes, "Well, guess what, Chris? I'm retiring in June." Just so happened, we were moving back in, in May. So, we talked back and forth, had an interview with, with Roger and Gail and staff, and it worked out. It's, it's such an honor to, to be chosen for this position. I know what I've got to attempt to follow, but certainly I've been handed the keys to a smooth-running machine, and, and I'll do my best to keep up that, that level of, of effort that you guys have experienced the last 11 years.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know Roger was talking about some of the interviews they had, and by far, Chris was so far out in front of everyone else, not to mention that, you know, y'all knew him, but just his qualifications, his credentials were, were superior, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Under committee reports, City School Board report, Kelly Johnson. Try to follow that, Kelly.
Hello. Can we have a buffer in between?
We're going to take a five-minute break.
So, Gail, we, I just appreciate all that you have done for the schools. You have been such a good partner. Most of all, I worry about who's going to help me keep Scott Ray reined in now. So, Chris, you do need to know that is part of your job responsibility, is keeping Scott what? And it is easier said than done, let me tell you. Gail had him down. She knew how to work him. But thank you, Gail, for all you've done. You are just precious to Clinton City Schools and to me as well. Just a couple of quick updates. We are, had an active summer this summer in Clinton City Schools. We had JA camp. We partnered with the Junior Achievement BizTown, which is great partners to us, and we had 75 of our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders go there for a week-long camp that we provide free, no charge to our students, where they get to pick what job they want, create a marketing plan and a business plan, implement that plan as the week goes on. Just a fun story of the kinds of things they learn at BizTown, is we had the joy of transporting several of our kids there that week, and so, we had five and six kids in the school vehicles with us, taking them to camp. So, we got to hear their stories, and one of the girls got in in a, a beautiful dress, and she had dressed up because she was interviewing for her job that day, and had put her skill set on a napkin that her and her mother had created that night before at the dinner table, so that she would have some talking points to help her through her interview. So, picked back up, and the kids at the end of the day, and asked if they had a good day, and if they got the job they wanted, and of course she did, and she was ecstatic. Another child was not so happy, because she was going for the movie usher, and she got a CEO instead. And it was a devastating event for her, because she said that she only got one lunch break all day long, and she wasn't sure she was going to go back. So, it was fabulous what they learned at JA. We also had about 200 of our students, not only Clinton City Kids, but just kids in the general area, that attended Allison Swanner's Exceptional Art Camp at Clinton Elementary. And then we're, we've got about 200 students right now attending our summer learning camps at North Clinton Elementary from all three schools. So, we are winding up that program this week, and it has been a huge success. Construction continues at South Clinton Elementary School with our addition. Wright's Contracting keeps assuring us that we are going to be ready to open by school, and you can look at Scott Ray's face to see if he agrees with that or not. So, we're going to see who wins, Scott Ray, Scott Ray or Wright's Contracting. But we are hopeful that it will be done when kids come back. Also, at Clinton Elementary this summer, we're doing a capital project, replacing all of our plumbing in the two main hallways. And we did that as a result, if you recall, we had a water line bust in the fall when we had to let school out early and bust up the beautiful terrazzo floor, because all the plumbing is under that beautiful floor. So, Scott has worked, and we are now running the plumbing in the ceilings, so that, number one, we know when there's a water leak, but number two, we can get to it without busting up that beautiful floor. So, that is occurring as we speak. We also ran into a slight structural issue with the Clinton Elementary School wall, the auditorium wall, that we uncovered that in the spring, and so they have gone in and put some stabilizing pillars, and Scott Ray would be able to better speak to that. But that project is complete. That wall has been stabilized. So, lots of capital projects happening this summer. TCAP data is still embargoed, but it looks very promising. Cannot wait to share that with you. But I did want to let you know that our all-core tutoring that we participated in this year, our high dosage-low ratio tutoring, we served through this federally-funded program. We served 18 kids in each grade level. They had got, received 45 minutes of tutoring every day in groups of one teacher per three kids, and I can share that data with you, that out of that, 54% of those kids that participated in that tutoring moved into the proficient category on TCAP. So, that definitely helped our scores.
I know it's very difficult to estimate how many are gonna be coming into Clinton City Schools and everything. Is there any way of trying to plan or plot what we may need in the next five to 10 years?
I thought you all had a special budget for a new school somewhere there that we know. No, we do, we do expect, which is one of the reasons why we went ahead, and you can't build it when they come, you have to build it before they come. So, we've tried to be proactive, and that's why we built onto Clinton Elementary. That's why we're building onto South at this point. Interestingly enough, though, with Clinton Elementary, we have built that, and we are already utilizing every, we're back doing tutoring on the stage. And so, we filled those classrooms very, very quickly. And Scott Ray puts it very well, but back when we went to school, you just had a classroom, and you went to a music room and art room. Now, with all the interventions and the special programming, the ESL classes, the special education classes, all the interventions that we do, one child takes up a lot more space in an elementary school than they did when we went to school. And so, that space gets utilized very, very quickly. But yes, we're watching that.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks.
I always remind Tracy how soon school is, you know, to start again. About July, teachers report July 29.
Twenty-nine, yes.
Not too far away. Mr. Ray?
We had Board of Ed approve Budget Amendment Number Seven. I don't know if Gail had time to get that in your packet. We had a late board meeting, which was Thursday. So, you may not have a hard copy of it, but it will be available to you. We, and the General Purpose School Fund, had a net increase in appropriations of $90,000. Just standard end-of-year entries to kinda match our programming with our budget. I also adjusted some of the tax revenue to reflect actual results, since we're so close to year-end. In the Federal Projects Fund, we had a new grant, Best for All Grant, which we are using for Chromebooks and instructional supplies. It's like all of our other federal grants, it's a reimbursement grant. Tennessee Department of Ed approves the program, disperses the funds as we spend the funds, so we apply for reimbursement. In the Cafeteria Fund, there's no Budget Amendment recommended at this time. If you have any questions on some of the details, I'd be happy to answer. I know it's probably difficult if you don't have a copy, but...
Your motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Seven?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Staney?
Provened.
Councilman Hackback?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Yes, Budget Amendment Number Seven passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann?
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals met June 13. There was one out of business for the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and it was withdrawn at the request of the applicant. The Planning Commission also, as I say, met the same night, and there was a deferred business by the same applicant that also was withdrawn. But new business, Coal Creek S&amp;E requesting site plan review and approval for property located at 228 Fox Family Lane, Map 48, Parcel 58, Property Zone B4. This is for an expansion of Fox Motors that would be involved with detailing and washing vehicles for their business right there. And that was approved. And then, also Ralph Smith III requesting final plot review and approval for property located at Blockhouse Valley Road, Map 89, Parcel 102.01, Property Zone R1. This was a subdivision of property already existing, so that also was approved. And as we'll deal with later on in the meeting, Planning Commission discussed inordinates involving cell phone tower construction, and made some recommendations for some alterations there, and we'll be dealing with that in the form of recommendation a little bit later, I'm sure. Any questions?
Any questions for Councilman Gann? Thanks, Larry. While we're at it, any other board, community reports?
I understand, I was out of town, but I understand Green McAdoo had an outstanding Juneteenth celebration. They cooperated with the Beck Center in Knoxville, and I think they had an outstanding day. That continues to be kind of a hidden gem for a lot of people in Clinton, how good a job and how outstanding that facility is.
Great. Thanks for sharing. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Vice Mayor Farr?
CUB met on June 16, and we reviewed the monthly reports for April, and I believe a copy should be submitted in our packet. If not, please let me know, and I'll have it updated. We also approved a couple of work orders, one for a feeder location at Oliver Springs Highway, and another large ticket item for a new river feeder upgrade. We also approved over $80 million budget for fiscal year. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Zach? Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Under General Government Report, Mr. Houck?
Thank Main Street. Do you have a report?
I'm sorry, Kelly.
Catherine's out of town this week, so I'm gonna stand in for her, give you a very, very brief report on historic downtown. Just a couple of things, wanted to let you know that we have some surveys going on downtown right now for visitors, for folks walking around to find out where they came from, how they found downtown, what they've done, what they're gonna do, that will help us make the best decisions for advertising and marketing. We have the $10,000 that y'all have appropriated for several years specifically for billboards. We're gonna use that in the best way possible. We've partnered with Anderson County Tourism and Holiday Inn to advertise the Antique District for free. It's not costing us anything, they just agreed to do that for us. So, we've got that covered, and we're gonna find out, based on these surveys, what the best route for marketing downtown is gonna be, and not just downtown, the entire city, which is what you've tasked us with. The second thing Catherine wanted us to discuss was a grant that she found that she plans to apply for from T-Mobile for some community improvements, and I've got some copies for you guys, if I could pass that out. I'd forgotten how long ago we started that, but the Chamber, in cooperation with the city, embarked on the downtown vision in 2018, so it's been a little bit longer than I realized. But we're actually on step eight or nine right now of 11 steps, action items that were in that vision. So, that's really exciting that we've made it that far. That vision has come to life and has come to fruition. But one of the items, like I said, number eight or nine on that list, was some alterations to the church, we call it the Church Street Parking Lot, the big parking lot behind downtown. And I've given you copies of two different things. The really pretty one from Watercolor, that was the initial design that came out of that vision, which was really, really over the top and really, really expensive. So, wanted you to see that. That's where this really, the conversation started, was with that vision, that that parking lot, which is almost two and a half acres of asphalt that greets you when you come into downtown, needs to be a little bit more welcoming and more inviting, and somewhere that folks would like to spend a little time. We've naturally just started to use that area for events like the food truck rally that everybody enjoys so much, and the farmer's market. I think every downtown really needs a little spot to land when you have something, and for decades, I think we used the Hoskins family property, they very generously just always let us use that for food trucks, or performances for kids, or something like that. And it, you know, they've got plans, I'm sure, for that property. We need to have a space where we can have some of these things, where we don't constantly have to block Market Street, which is not conducive a lot of times to the stores. It's not easy on the city either, from what Roger's told us. So, Catherine found this grant from T-Mobile, it's $50,000, which will cover the cost of this extra landscaping. We did involve and talk to Roger from the beginning, before we even went down this road to look at doing this. This sketch, much simpler sketch, actually came from Roger, which was the restriping of the parking lot, which I believe you already had on, it's already kind of in the works, is what I understood. So, what, we're bringing this to you tonight, because we would just like your approval of this, since this would be something happening on city property. But it would involve just some extra landscaping. Believe it or not, you can spend 50 grand on extra trees and grass. Irrigation, and Catherine has a really detailed breakdown of what all that grant would pay for, which I do not have, and she will be happy to show it to you at some point. We really just took the plan from the landscaper and laid it over the top of the plan that Roger gave us. So, this is not really exact in any way, and it wasn't designed by the same person. But it just was a, sort of an idea of what that, the space that we're already using for these downtown events, what it could look like with a little bit of extra green to give people some, a more pleasant place to be for these downtown events. I don't wanna take up too much time, but have any questions? Or have I...
So, what's the number of parking spots we have today?
I was gonna help Joey out a little bit. Right now, we've got around 216 down there. We had Cannon and Cannon, that's doing our tap grants, look at the back parking lot. They came up with, I think, three, maybe four different designs. Right now, there's, I think, four different parking styles in that current parking lot. There's no real good rhyme or reason to the way it is. So, we had them lay it out, and probably the best design is kind of the overlay that you're looking at, that had 250 parking spaces. It kinda made everything with a good flow. So, what Catherine did, and this is kind of preliminary what you're seeing here, because I've met with Catherine and Joey and their group three or four times, this is preliminary, because we've gotta look at utilities, there's several things we have to look at this, this is kinda just to get their grant application in. So, there's some things that could even change on this. Like I said, it's kind of preliminary. So, this current design they had, to down to 193, that could even change. That's not a definite, it could go up, I don't think it would go down any, but it could possibly even go up. So, right now, we're at 216, I think this would take it to roughly 193. Like I said, that could possibly change somewhat. We've got some green area back behind where they've got the little building. Like I said, we could tweak it, it'll depend on utility location, some of the green space area. But right now, like I said, you're only looking at, from current configuration, probably less than 20, 22 parking places.
This doesn't count Cullen Street, though, either, as far as the additional parking spaces we're talking about.
Correct.
So, we could pick up maybe a dozen, 20, go on that.
Right.
I personally don't have, I mean, Joey and I, and Catherine, and Molly, we spoke, and...
And Joey is right, and Chief Becker, we've talked about it, JB. The last couple of events we've done up here, the Chamber Event, what was the other one we did, they used the...
Four or five Ks this year.
A couple, four or five Ks. It's a lot easier to do an event back there than it is on Market Street, especially if it's a 4K, 5K. It's much easier to control the traffic, it's much safer. So, it is a decent event, venue space back there.
So, what's the ask?
We just, they want council's blessing on proceeding on with the grant process.
So, a motion to approve the...
You want a letter of support?
Movement forward with the grant process?
Yeah, we have a letter of support that we would need from the city to turn in with the grant.
That we need a motion from this?
Just, yes, a motion to support the project.
I make a motion that the City of Clinton, through council, supports this grant process for Main Street.
So moved. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Only thing, and again, we had a good conversation last week or two ago, and this all looks good. I don't know if, you know, anything permanent coming in. I don't know if it should be married to one location on the parking area, might be, you know, based on new businesses coming in, things like that. It might be do some things at the end of Cullen Street, you know, not just necessarily just one spot. Because I think we need to be sensitive to the fact, you know, at the end of the day, this is a parking lot, and we just need to make sure that we, you know, we've spent a lot of conversations with parking spaces in the last, you know, six or eight months, that we just need to be sensitive with that, too. But I think it's a good idea, and I'm supportive. But we just need to keep that, those couple of things in mind, I think.
Any more discussion? On paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Joey.
Thank you. And Joey, I've got that letter for you. Okay.
Okay. General Government, Harbor Drive, just for information, CUB and Powell Clinch have completed the utility relocation, and the Public Works Department has started the grading and drainage work in preparation for the paving, which we anticipate to be in early August, and that's for Harbor Drive. Our tap grant, our project engineer has been working with TDOT through the review and approval process. During the construction plan review, TDOT's environmental office has determined since we had to require right-of-way and temporary construction easements, an updated environmental review will be required. This process could take several months to be completed. While this is going on, there's other required, other requirements that can be completed. We're now projecting a winter 2023 start date for the construction, which we are asking to begin on Market Street instead of Broad Street. As this was determined just a couple, really within the last 10 to 14 days, due to the ADA requirements, we had to require some right-of-way, and so, there's some construction easements on the project. That was one side of TDOT requiring that. When we turned in the final construction documents, the environmental side of TDOT is saying, since we've changed some of the plans, we've gotta come back and do an additional environmental study, which could take three to four months, possibly. We don't think it'll take that long, but it's gonna push us into the holidays, so we're projecting the new start date sometime probably after the first of the year. I know the businesses were concerned, they really wanted to get their holiday season in, so our initial start location was we'll be on Broad Street, working towards Market, allowing them to have the Christmas season. So, since we're probably gonna be starting after the first of the year, we'll ask the contractor, once they award it, to reverse that, and since we'll be starting after Christmas, start on Market Street and work the other way, so hopefully, we'll be done with Market Street before next summer, and that way, they can have their busier times of the year. Winter, early spring, they tell us that that's their slower time. So, we'll try to work with merchants as best as possible. Let's see. The Aspire Foundation has completed the improvements to the Yarnell Road and Aspire Drive, Clinch Avenue intersection. Construction was completed to city standards and inspected by Public Works. I therefore recommend that a fine right-of-way portion of Aspire Park Drive and a relocated park portion of Yarnell Road be accepted as a public street with authorization for the mayor to execute the needed documentation.
Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? On paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Animal Controlled Holding Services, we use the Anderson County Animal Care and Controlled Holding Facility on Blockhouse Valley Road to provide shelter for the impounded animals. Therefore, I recommend the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding for Animal Controlled Services with the Anderson County for the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30 of 2023.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? This doesn't change from last year, right? It's just something we have to do on a annual basis.
No, just updated MOU.
On paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance, I defer to Gail.
You've got your monthly report, and you can see it shows us with an excess of 1.9 million currently. A big part of that is the 1.5 million that we got in ARPA funds, and I'm sure Chris will be bringing back some reserves for you all to consider, either in July or August. August. Um, we've collected over 98% of our tax aggregate this year, which is really good. We usually run close to 97, so that's a little bit better than what we've run in the past. Um, if you look at our revenues, um, another part of that is, is we have, um, our property tax current and delinquent, our sales tax, our business tax, our hotel motel tax, our building permits, and almost all of our state shared revenues, which is your state, um, highway money, uh, state sales tax, all those have exceeded our budget. Of course, as you remember, we were budgeting still with some COVID and some decreased revenues in mind, so we budgeted very conservatively, so, um, having said that, we have spent this year over 1.2 million on capital outlay, so a big part of that being our new pumper truck for the fire department. Um, sales tax wise, we were up again this month, uh, 7.76% with a year-to-date of a little over 10%, which equates to about, if that's holds steady, about $400,000 in growth in local option sales tax. And so that's, again, really good. Countywide, they're a year-to-date of a little less than 5%, so we're keeping right on track with them. Um, you've got Budget Amendment Nine, which is kind of a combination of cleanup as well as some, uh, additional capital outlay projects, and all that is currently rolled into our Budget Amendment Ordinance as well.
Here a motion for approval for Budget Amendment Number Nine.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Budget Amendment Number Nine passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for Gail? Thank you, Gail.
Good deal. Public Works Department, in accordance with Article 5, Section 8 of the City Charter, I would request authorization to renew the annual contracts for material and services for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30 of 2023 with the following companies: Rogers Group Incorporated for Asphalt/Stone, Duracap Asphalting and Paving Company for Asphalt, Atlantic Incorporated Harrison Construction Company for Concrete, Superior Drainage Products for HDPE Colbert, Volunteer Highway Supply Company for Pavement Marking, and Blue Water Industry for Stone Products.
Your motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Only other thing I've got, uh, just before the council meeting, we did get an update on the LPRF grant on our outdoor swimming pool, uh, which, as you remember, a couple months ago, we had, the, the budget for that grant was a million dollars. Couple, I think it was two, maybe three meetings ago, we got contact from the state where they asked us if we wanted more money, so we upped that to a million five, the budget for that project. Right before the meeting, we did get a notice from TDEC that our contract had been awarded, but the award date is August the 15th. Why that is, I can't explain it. I mean, I, the, the process on these grants just takes forever, so once again, that means the way me and Gail and I took it, that we'll get our contract in seven weeks, and that's when we can actually officially start on the project. Right now, we can't proceed on any part of it till we have that contract, but at least we got notice that we'll get the contract on the 15th of August.
Any questions for Roger?
We're going to say anything about the letter that was sent?
Yes, and we did. We split it in your mail. We did, um, on the magnet mails, seen very little to no movement the last three or four months, so we met with Albert Harbor Attorney, we went ahead and dropped them a letter on the 16th of June, gave them drop dead deadline to July 5th, it could be completely done with the project, or we were moving in with our contractor that you all had approved back last, end of last year. Uh, as you all noticed, they did move in a little bit last week, working. Uh, once again, at this point, it doesn't matter if they're not completed with the cleanup next week, we will have our contractor move in.
Good. Great. Any other questions for Roger? Thank you, Roger. Before I forget, the, um, we have a new fire truck outside, and you leave, we're not ready to leave yet, but, uh, when you leave, please take a look at it. What's the price tag on that fire truck, Jeff?
I heard that, uh, it's Gail from, it was that.
$519,000.
$519,000 paid in cash, not borrowed. That's something to be proud of. A lot of cities don't do that, but that fire truck is specifically going to South Clinton. So, thank you. But make sure you take a look at it. Um, JB, I'm going to put you on the spot, because we haven't talked about July 4th. You mind going to the podium or just, you can talk to the microphone there? Also, when you're talking about it, talking about your route, since Riverside's not open yet, about how the kids get there and through and all that?
Uh, everything's basically the same on the 4th with the same stuff we had last year. We added an axe throwing, uh?
Oh, Lord.
Uh, one, one cool thing this year is, which we've had in the past, we, I've had a hard time getting food trucks, and now it seems like everybody wants to come for the 4th of July, so we got like 10 food trucks.
Wow.
Um, I'm not going to go through all of them, but, uh, we got together the other day and talked about it with PD. We'll have under the bridge on both sides blocked, um, but the past couple of years, we've had a route that comes across Charles Seaver's Boulevard, so if everybody parks, we have somebody to get them across the street and stop cars and everything else. The other side, I think, police is going to have somebody over there to make sure nobody comes underneath the bridge and gets in all the construction stuff. So everything will be confined down there. Parking will be the issue, but it's always been, so.
So 5:00, funding, games, food?
Everything kind of winds down 9:30, fireworks at 10:00.
10:00. Rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
And the, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the bridge will be open to pedestrian traffic, but we will not be allowing people to stand on the bridge to watch the fireworks.
Okay.
Correct.
So let me ask you about the dog park. Is it going to be open on the 5th?
It'd be open, we're going to close it on the 4th, the day of the fireworks, and then on that morning, the next morning, we're going to go over there and make sure?
All the trash picked up?
All the bridges cleaned up, everything's good, probably open at 12. I hope, I hope before then, but 12's what we put.
You put down anything on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have to, by law, we have to secure, we, we have to come back at first daylight and secure, go through the park, make sure all the shells are cleared out of the debris, so it'll be later, it'll be later in the afternoon before we can open it up on the 5th.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Roger?
Just make a point of the report that we got, uh, certainly JB's been busy, looks like the disc golf course and some other things are, are moving right along, and it looks like, congratulations, and it looks good, looks good.
Under ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, ordinance number 6673, that's fiscal year 2021 slash 2022 Budget Amendment. Your motion for approval?
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Gail, you want to kind of, well, I ask you this every year, you just want to kind of give a brief overview for everyone? What this is?
Most of what we did, we did during the year this time with capital outlay projects, um, and so I just incorporate those into this document, and then the rest of it is really just cleanup, where we, uh, we try to get as close as we can, even on line item budgets, and kind of slow down the spending right there at the end of the year, and so we move a little bit of everything around, and, and you see that in Budget Amendment Nine, a lot of the stuff that we did, and so it's really just a big cleanup for, for the end of the year.
Okay. Any questions for Gail or Roger? Um, I did a motion, you know? Discussion, uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 673 passes on first of two readings. Ordinance number 674, amending Title 14, Sections 204 and 318. This is the development standards for telecommunications towers. Your motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey? Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 674 passes on first of two readings. Second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 672, this is for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey? Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
And Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 672 passes on the second of final reading. Um, under resolutions, resolution number 822, this is the CDBG slash CB Childcare Creation Program Additional Funds Agreement. Your motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roger, can you, somebody speak on this?
This is a grant that we're applying for, for the National Guard Armory. We're, we're right now in partnership with, uh, the Boys and Girls Club and working with ACED to get some grant funds to hopefully be able to provide some childcare for not only city employees, but also for our employees for our industrial parks. And this will be a pretty big program if we can kick it off. It'll be, this money will be to renovate the building, uh, if, if the program goes through, and, and ACED is actually working with the Boys and Girls Club to do a survey right now. Uh, the industries are very interested in our three industrial parks and supporting the program, they'll help actually fund it.
Great. Fantastic. Any further questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number 822 passes. Resolution number 823, this is the Coronavirus Fund Spend Plan, amending resolution number 821. Your motion for approval?
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roger, can you speak to this?